Okay, councilperson Becker, absent. Councilperson Fisher?
Here.
Councilperson Schomburg?
Present.
Councilperson Picarelle?
Present.
Councilperson Massa?
Present.
All right, if you guys look through the agenda real quick, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the modification of removing the closed session for the council meeting February twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three. That's all we're gonna get rid of. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Madam Clerk, has the agenda been posted, dated, and signed?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll give you a few moments to look through the minutes. When you're ready, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Moving on to public comment, Crystal City Historical Society Block Party.
Since I'm the only one here about that, it was gonna be on May thirteenth, Saturday, May thirteenth, and basically it's kind of Clayton's idea of doing a showing his movies and just having an event out on the cobblestones. But we wanna table that until we know what the answer to where the museum's gonna be. So don't have anything for that right now.
Okay, so we'll come back to that then next month. We'll put it under having present next month then.
Yeah, should we file another?
Yes.
Piece of paper?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just have him file another piece of paper and then come back.
Okay.
All right, check register and bills. If you look through there, I got a couple of notes on that. Our use tax went up and our taxes are about two months delayed. So the use tax came up to about twenty-four thousand just on that new use tax we passed. And that was for basically the month of December. So that was a good thing. It's going in the right direction. That's what Mr. Eisenbach projected was about twenty-five a month. So hopefully that continues to keep up because that's good, good added revenue dedicated to the road sidewalks and alleys, so.
That'll probably be about as good as it gets though, don't you think?
It should be the top. Well, I don't know. I mean...
December shopping's kinda...
The park revenue really had its figures for around three hundred thousand a year. So...
That's twenty-five a month. And then...
But it's, it's that, talking to other cities, it trickles in, trickles in, and all of a sudden you start seeing a lot of growth. So some companies pay quarterly, some pay monthly. So it's, it's very, we've been seeing probably about twelve to thirteen thousand a month. So that was typically probably maybe bigger than normal, but let's see. I mean, most cities have seen way above what the park revenue predicts.
And I will say with that use tax, that's the only one that showed a positive. The other ones, even during December, the brick and mortar stores were down just about a thousand each, it looked like. So...
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. The committee reports are in your packet. I got a couple of things with those. If you guys have any questions, Mr. Turner's here and Chief Helms is here. But I wanna point out in the packets that Mr. Sullivan has quite a bit more detail on his report than previously. It's very good. And so does Mr. Turner. And he was recently promoted, which you guys all did. And I think that was a great, great promotion for the city. But if you look through there, there's quite a bit more detail than we're used to, and that's, that's nice. So thank you, Mr. Turner and Mr. Sullivan. And Mr. Turner, you have anything to add to those?
Um, one thing that wasn't on there, just wanna bring up, and I don't know if Mr. Picarelle may bring it up in his name, but the sewer plant, we did approve a bid for a manometer, a pump rod to clear out our, what do they think's down there? Were the sewer pumps to our pumps is about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And the reason we're doing that, the past two years, the last, I don't want to go back to the pretty got too expensive, we were up to two hundred thousand dollars in pump repairs. So as the commission decided during that, uh, old tank area, you can't see what the heck's going on in there. And right now, some of the issues have just now started, so it's not put on our radar.
Okay, so we gotta... Okay. Anything else, Ms. Turner?
Nope.
Any of you that have questions for Ms. Turner? Chief Helms?
Mayor, I just had the annual, uh, traffic grant that I would like requesting when you affirm yourself in the council on something we applied part of our year. We were getting awarded, uh, two grants this year for H O B and a new ballot of all enforcement. So almost twelve thousand dollars, almost three thousand dollars, so fifty thousand dollars, which, um, we pay as officers over time, um, for traffic important efforts. So this is the procedural thing.
Excellent. Thank you for getting that grant.
You have to, thanks.
All right. All right, that should take me to council liaison reports. Paper when it comes around, if you guys just wanna sign that. Library School Board, Councilperson Fisher?
A big thing that happened at the library recently was Phil Pagano, uh, wrote a book. He's the singing chef. I went there for the book signing and had him sign mine and talked to him a little bit. It was pretty much like a Crystal City High School reunion for anyone within, anywhere close to my age. I mean, there were a ton of people.
I was gonna say, I heard it had a great turnout.
It was huge.
Good.
So anyway, that's all I have. It was really nice, well attended. Everybody enjoyed theirselves. It was a nice event.
It had a nice article in the paper about Crystal City, so that was, that was nice. Uh, Park, Councilperson Schomburg? Uh, Sewer Commission, Mr. Picarelle, I guess we covered. Thank you. Uh, Zoning Appeals, Councilperson Geneva?
I don't have anything.
Okay. And Levy Commission, Councilperson Kemfer. All right. Uh, Public Response, does anyone have anything they wish to speak on, on the previous meeting? All righty, moving on. Old business, we have none. New business? New Business, Councilperson Geneva, uh, wanted to decide and put up on our agenda about moving the Historical Society. Uh, the city's needing some room. And I guess I'll let Jason take the floor on that, or Jack?
Well, everything I wanted to say is in the email that I sent out on the sixteenth, Thursday the sixteenth. So do we need to review that?
Did you guys read it on the email? Okay, he just wanted a discussion on where we stand, I mean, just putting it on the radar for later discussion. I'd probably recommend a more in-depth discussion at the work session on March thirteenth.
Well, that means that Jason's gonna have to hold off on what he, his plans were until that time.
We, yeah, I mean, we were just looking at bids to see what it's going to be to make sure the council, because they don't have any information to actually vote on that yet, you know, cost-wise and things of that nature.
Right. So we're gonna discuss the whole thing in March then, in the work session? Is that what you have in mind?
I mean, I would prefer that probably. I mean, we can discuss it now if you want. I mean, it's just, uh, everybody has the email and...
Yeah.
It's just moving the Historical Society to a location so that the city has rooms for a couple of offices and a meeting room mainly, so we don't have to just tear down the council chamber all the time and rebuild it. But, I mean...
Yeah, that, I mean, that used, how many times did they use that over there in a month?
It's a museum, so it's, it's, it holds all of the history and with all the artifacts that people contributed for the last, I don't know how many years.
How often do people?
Well, it's, it's been sporadic for the last twenty years. I mean, it's been better for the last year and a half because we've had, uh, we've had new members of the organization. And so it's been open twice a month for anybody that wants to come into it.
We've had a couple issues with, I mean, we need the space for a couple of offices and things like that. So we, I mean, this is a, a thing, I guess, been going on for a year or so, I guess.
Like David was asking, a couple times a month, are you talking, did people show up a day, a hundred people show up a day?
Oh, no. We had an, we had an average of about five, five to six every time we had it open.
Twelve people a month. Is it gonna hold up office space?
Well, I, I don't, not necessarily is it gonna hold it up. I think it's up to us to find something, a suitable place for them to go. And I think we can probably do that.
We had some discussions with the library and stuff, and that was, that was a good discussion. But there's, there's some artifacts there that people don't wanna be responsible for. And that was one of their...
Can you put it in lock cases?
Well, that was one of the discussions. That's the thing, like, we were gonna, I was gonna go through those.
It's locked up over there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, that's a very secure spot. It's next to, next to police station.
They just put the library in a secure case, same house. Some libraries into your library stills, we, we don't hold you liable. But it's pretty secure at the library.
We have a letter from the library. I don't have that with me that...
I think it'd be viewed a lot more if it's...
Yeah, it's open everywhere.
That big room to see it.
Right. No, that's, I was, that's what I would like is, you know, mainly to have more people view our history. Because the, the History Museum has a wealth of information over there. It's pretty neat. But it is only open once a month or twice possibly.
Well, I think, I think one of the issues with the library too is that they kinda consider it their responsibility if it's there. Because the people that attend to it now is a volunteer organization that only does that every once in a while. And if it's open at the library all the time, I don't think they feel it's right to just let people go and browse around without somebody accompanying them or something.
I think we, uh...
But if it's in a lock case?
Well, there are no lock cases now, so that, that would all have to be done.
That's what I'm talking about, Jack.
Wow.
Yeah, like if the city, so, I mean, there's some stuff that the city can do. I know we, we talked about it briefly at that other meeting and, uh...
Is the library on board with this, or?
Not for the room. Not for, like, they had a little room we presented, and they're not, like I said, I don't have that letter in front of me. But...
They basically, we had approached them back in, like, October, something like that, to have their big room. And that was awful. They post events and have things around somewhere like the book signing. But, so they sent the letter over in December, which I forwarded last week or week before last to Jackson Clayton, the, the local society. I think they're up for maybe like two or three cases that you could put in there, little stuff blocks, you know, just to provide a call to the letter and get the rights. Uh, they just didn't want all the stuff, or they just wanted to give them that room. They just use that room on occasion if they were gonna have an event, you know, or talk to, I don't know, whatever kind of...
Right.
So, I don't understand what you're trying to...
We're just... Right. I mean, we, we were just bringing it to your guys' attention. We'll see how it is. We're not...
Well, well, part of my argument too is, is, you know, take the Historical Society out of the equation altogether. If we move them, the city's gonna have to pay for where they go. So it's an added expense. And do we really need more offices than what we have now? If we do, would it be better to rent temporary space? Because is the reason we need the offices? Because we got a big project coming up? And once the construction phase of that is done, do we still need that permanent space? So that's, that's all the questions I wanna answer too.
We're, we're always gonna need a place to meet.
Well, we need a conference room. When we're dealing with lawyers, I mean, we had lawyers come in and we're trying to negotiate things, and they were pulling up laptops on their chair. We lose a, a sense of authority when we don't have a conference room. Uh, I would like a conference room for that meeting. And as our, right, and as our structure sets, I, I like how it's the administrator of public works, and I would like them close to City Hall. In City Hall or close. So that would bring Mr. Turner up instead of the building.
Well, that kinda brings out the Great Streets program too, because even in there, they talk about it being unfortunate that we got a fire hall right in downtown Crystal City. It'd be, be nicer if that space was used for something else, like that would bring people here to, to see the historic part of Crystal City. So in that case, we know we're kind of expanding the city that way for office space, whereas I think a museum would be better to, to bring attractions here than a city office space. I'm just questioning all this stuff. I just...
No, that's your job.
We just need a table? We can't put a table here? I guess the, the real problem is that we'd have to tear everything down, put everything up every time we use it, right?
It is. It's just, it's more of an inconvenience when we have the building over there.
So we're talking, we're talking at least five hundred bucks a month. I mean, uh, I think Jason's proposal was, uh, placed next to the post office, and they're asking for five hundred a month plus utilities, which probably wouldn't be much, but just to turn tomorrow would probably be at least a hundred bucks a month.
Is there enough space at that location?
I don't know. We'd probably have to tear down some walls or something. It, it looks off, it looks smaller to me.
I, I think it's bigger in the back, and it looks, there's some walls going across, but I, I didn't know my stuff in the Historical Society.
And the problem I got with that is, I know it's, uh, you know, the family that owns it now are, they probably have the intentions to hang on to it for a while. But, you know, if somebody comes in here and wants to pay them a bunch of money, they'll, they'll sell it, and they'll get rid of all the tenants and...
Well, Jack, correct me if I'm wrong. I, I mean, when we, when I stepped in there, we just had a little impromptu meeting at the Historical Society. That building was off the table. Like, you guys did not want that, so I...
Oh, no, the city can do what they want, but the Historical Society will do what they want too.
Right.
Which, which means that, you know, they don't agree with it. They'll, you'll have to find somebody else to run it. So...
Okay. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to move this discussion to the work session on March thirteenth. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries.
Mayor, I apologize for coming on late. Amtrak is, uh, exercising their usual reliability.
Ha ha, not a problem. Glad to have you. All right, uh, ordinances and resolution? You are just in time, buddy.
Yeah, you need to explain this to us.
What am I, all right.
This is ordinance.
Oh, that one.
We've been dealing with these guys for a long time. Basically, they're gonna do a tier one human health risk assessment, or what is considered or done by, or dump site, where we set yardways. Uh, so as part of the brownfield cleanup environmental on the PPG property, uh, so Brandon's reviewed the ordinance. He's been staying around for six months at least, back and forth with, uh, with, uh, you know, the, over, I think from PPG. Uh, they're also in agreement with eleven different, everything. So basically, we're gonna come in, test, test the site and then pick yours eight or twelve locations, uh, test the soil, using five.
What?
Yeah, okay.
What is the...
I, I mean, I have...
What does, what does the Levy Commission have to do with it?
There, so there's two, four...
So it's past where White Hickey Park used to be?
Yeah.
Okay, along, along the levee there?
Yeah, well, on this side of the fence, yeah, which I kind of, I'm tired out there.
Had they ever done any testing there before?
No, they tried to do this probably four or, what'd they, three to five years ago, but they wouldn't, um, I wanted to make sure that we aren't gonna be liable if they find anything, because we don't have anything there but yardage.
Mm-hmm.
So it's taken that long to get to this point.
So there's some language in that eighty pages that says that PPG's gonna be...
Should be kinda in the ordinance, where I have it.
And Brandon didn't have any problem with not mentioning the leaseholder in any of this? Well, the... For the, for the location of our dump, that's a separate parcel on that leaseho, leaseholder is not included in that in any way, right?
No, that should stay with us.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying.
I can forward this deal. I just didn't put all this in your package.
So this doesn't include the, the regular PPG property?
No.
Oh, okay, well, it's...
Just the, just the yardways dump.
That wasn't, that wasn't obvious with the words here, I didn't think.
It's very, sorry, right there.
So, okay. So I'm supposed to look, oh, none of the city dump, okay.
It's part of the brownfield cleanup, you know.
Right, right.
Did PPG take order turn, or? I don't know. We did not.
Is that what you guys use over there?
We usually...
Ha, I'll entertain a motion to read bill eighteen ninety dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading by title only. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill eighteen ninety dash twenty twenty-three by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen ninety dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading by title only. An ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing Mayor Mike Osher to enter into an excess agreement between the city of Crystal City, Missouri owner and PPG Industries, Inc., a Pennsylvania corporation, to participate in the state of Missouri voluntary cleanup program, MVCP, for certain real property located within the city limits of Crystal City.
I'll move to accept bill eighteen ninety dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading. Second.
All right, a motion's been made and seconded to accept bill eighteen ninety dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, one opposed.
Just for the, back to who they're using.
Okay.
Um, can you characterize your objection to?
We, we've got two people do our sampling. We got Order and Kern do some. We got WSP, it's former Wood.
Mm-hmm.
Wood Company, Wood is much better. They're cheaper. Um, you know, do better jobs for us.
Jason, are we...
They do D-Well sampling, they do yard sampling.
We didn't pick...
Are we paying for it?
We didn't, I don't, I don't guess we have to pick them, but I wouldn't use them at that.
No, it's not us. It's, PPG got to pick their...
No.
Yeah, they're, Order and Kern's east coast, northeast, so, um, New England area.
Well, that's probably why. They're, they're familiar with them from out there, so...
Right.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion to read bill eighteen ninety dash twenty twenty-three on its second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, noted. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill eighteen ninety dash twenty twenty-three by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen ninety dash twenty twenty-three on its second reading by title only. An ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing Mayor Mike Osher to enter into an excess agreement between the city of Crystal City, Missouri owner and PPG Industries, Inc., a Pennsylvania corporation, to participate in the state of Missouri voluntary cleanup program, MVCP, for certain real property located within the city limits of Crystal City.
I'll move to accept bill eighteen ninety dash twenty twenty-three on its second and final reading.
On second.
All right, oh, a motion's been made and seconded to approve bill eighteen ninety dash twenty twenty-three on its second and final reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Bradley's opposed. Motion carries. I'll poll the council. Mr. Bradley, opposed. Mr. Kemfer?
Yes.
Mr. Geneva?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Schomburg?
Yes.
Mr. Picarelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Massa?
Yes.
Bill number eighteen ninety dash twenty twenty-three now becomes ordinance, eighteen ninety dash twenty twenty-three. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? All right. See, administrator's report is in your packet. It was laid out on your desk there. Go ahead and take a moment to read through that. Jason, you have anything to add on that?
Jason, can you give us an update on when the salary study is expected to be done or when we can see some results from it?
End of April.
End of April.
Did we tear down those buildings ourselves?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. We sent letters. Um, Gerard Leaven tore down, actually, a building houses at Colonel Drive and the one here that's, uh, first and, uh, Taylor, first and Taylor. And I'm not sure what, uh, uh, Mr. Alvan, what he did to this property.
Yeah, we sent those out because the roof was falling in on them, and it just needed done. So Mr. Sullivan kinda took that on.
Oops.
Oh, I know we sent the one right across by the elementary there. Uh, so we sent the letter. I called him personally, and he's like, I come back into town in April.
Okay.
So we stuck, when we sent the letter out, we dated it. He has thirty days from, from April, yeah.
What's his name? Our, okay.
Yep.
I'm guessing the old building with the roof falling in. Did we get all paperwork for that, like, as medicine's abatement?
We do. Or, I don't know if they're required, I don't know if they're not, I haven't met with them. They'll be pumped on inside of them. As old as it was?
Yeah, he set that up with Gerard. We don't, we sent a letter out saying, hey, it needed repaired or demolished, and he chose the demolish route. All right, moves on to my report. Uh, signs have been installed on Bailey, or the light post signs, and they will be installed on the other side of Bailey, uh, going up by Sacred Heart. So, we have some, some marketing and a little confusion with, uh, the street guys, so that's all right. We just got some more extra signs. And, uh, I need to thank Shannon Meyer for designing them, and, uh, she's working on some other ones to go, and, um, well, thank you. And, uh, there was a private donation to pay for those, so there was no cost to the city at all on marketing, so, yeah, it worked out well. Um, the firehouse had some long overdue maintenance completed. It looks good. Uh, I'd like to thank Chief Bovin and his men for getting that completed. They, uh, added a bunk space and things like that. They had some leftover material, they were just kind of using that stuff up, so it looks good at any point in time it's open. Fire guys do a great job over there, so... And then, I do have an appointment. It was in the packet, it's, uh, Roger Faith to the park board. He's filling a position from a resignation, so I'd entertain a motion to approve Roger Faith to fill the park board.
I don't know Roger Faith.
Okay, Roger, so Roger is, uh, he's new to the area, but, uh, he moved in from Papa Boss area. Uh, he lives right across from Jason, um, but he, he's in the park, he has some experience. Well, that's, that's, hey, you know what? He's, uh, so basically, he, uh, just a little short, short history of him. I met him when I was in, in the park, walking around and stuff, and, uh, he owned a business. He retired up here in the area, and, uh, he married, uh, Susan Bond, yeah. So, he married Susan Bond, so he's... See? Yeah. Yeah, so, and then... Yeah, so he lives there and, uh, has business, financial experience and things like that, so. Talked to Jimmy, thought it'd be good.
I'll, uh, make a motion for the appointment.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, going to roundtable. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemfer? Councilperson Ginevra?
Uh, just real quick, I, I sent another email out on the sixth about, um, a town in Elk Creek, Nebraska that, uh, is doing a mining operation for rare earth minerals. And if you want to keep abreast of what's going on, I mean, if things are moving forward, the, the climate is good for, um, mining in the United States and, and manufacturing rare earth materials and, and refinery plants in the United States. And I just don't hear anything from our favorite person about that, and I just want everybody to be aware of that.
Did you look at the area? Are they actually mining there anywhere?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's pretty barren out there, isn't it? There's a lot of, lot of... Oh, okay, yeah, there's a lot of farmland. I know, I know there was a couple of, uh, farmers that said that they were, that their property was involved in it. Yeah, which is probably good. Anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Becker?
Uh, it was starting to get dark as I was getting into town, but did I see that some, uh, work has been done on the retaining that wall there at the graveyard?
Not yet, I think a couple of blocks got pull, pulled off. And, uh, I did drop the paperwork off to Mr. Grab, not spoke with him since. Stopped by a couple of times, he's out. But, we have an agreement drawn up for us to continue like we've previously voted on. We just gotta have a signature that basically, once that wall is fixed, we don't own that wall anymore. And, I mean, to be clear, we don't own it. But, we're just trying to get it fixed, so...
By fixing it, we're not taking ownership of it?
That's correct.
And then, uh, I assume you guys covered where our closed session is canceled for tonight? Yeah, that's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fisher?
The cultural diversity luncheon was a very nice event. It typically is, I've attended a number of them, um, so, uh, we were, no one from Festus attended. Um, there's an issue with the, the hotel there. I don't know if you guys, anybody had heard anything about that, but, uh, that hotel has, is way behind with the city of Festus. They technically don't have a license to operate right now. And, uh, so, that's why none of the city, uh, attended. I didn't know it, and neither did Mr. Sparling, the people that put it on, uh, until after it was too late to change it. Uh, but next year, they're gonna ho- I think they're gonna hold that event at the, uh, Festus High School.
Oh, excellent.
So, but it, it was a nice event despite the confusion with, with the people at the hotel.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, we bought a table, but, uh, we were, I was out of town, Mr. Becker's out of town. We had, so, I appreciate you representing the city on that.
It, it was a great event, and a lot of people talked to me and asked me about Crystal City, and so, we, we had a presence there.
Well, thank you very much for that. Ms. Schomburg? Mr. Picarella? Ms. Massa? Mr. Cherry is not here. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the regular council meeting.
So, moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Meeting is now adjourned. And we don't have it closed, so... That's it, so, thank you, guys, hey, we did...
Wood and Kern's horrible. I couldn't come out and say, Wood and Kern, they're horrible.
How much does it cost?
Not at all?
Well, what we need is...
How much it costs?
They didn't retire, uh, we gotta catch...
No, I was in, uh, Chicago over the weekend.